Let the record reflect. Meeting is reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 22nd, November 5th, November 26th, and December 10th?
I'll move them. Second?
These were discussed in executive. May roll call vote please.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
All right, a motion for the regular minutes of October 22nd.
I'll move them. Second?
Discussion?
But there are some changes at our seats.
So they were changes that have already been incorporated into the minutes, so we are set. All right, roll call.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
Motion for a special meeting, November 21st, 2012.
I'll move them. Second?
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
Motion for a special meeting, November 21st, 2012.
I'll move them. Second?
Discussion? May roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Abstain.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
I guess then, uh, mayors, yes. Fourth vote. A motion for the regular meeting, regular minutes of November 26th, 2012.
I'll move them. Second?
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
And, I've lost track. Are we, okay. And the reg- regular, I trusted my scorecard here. Regular minutes to December 10th, 2012.
I'll move them. Second?
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Abstain.
And Mr. Walklewitz?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. And welcome, Happy New Year. And we apologize, our New Year's resolution was to start off on the right foot, Mr. Sosciello, and, um, my shoelace was untied and I stumbled, and so, we were about 10 minutes late. So I apologize. We will strive to be on time. We even started an hour early to try to hit the 8 o'clock. But, uh, a full agenda. But, good news is, the teleview server has been repaired, so we will be back on the air. So, uh, hopefully you've been checking us out on the web, but, uh, we will be back on FiOS and Cablevision on a regular basis. So, um, that is very good news. Um, a couple other things to report on. I see John Hoover halfway down. When you have a hard-working person, word often gets right around the world. And regretfully, John submitted his resignation from the Board of Health because he's accepted a consulting job in Saudi Arabia for the next 42 weeks. So I want to thank John for all his work on behalf of the Borough of Madison, and wish him the best of luck. I know you get to come back and visit once in a while, and, uh, good luck on that new challenge. A little report on the library. The asbestos abatement latest version has completed, covered three areas, and working through the state contract, they were able to get, uh, a very good contract, in fact able to take care of a third area as opposed to just two, that was the original plan. And also want to congratulate Drew University, being selected the winner of the 2012 Governor's Environmental Excellence Award, GEEA, in the healthy ecosystems category. And it's, was for Drew University Ecosystem Restoration Project. So congratulations on all their work on that. And it's, it's always great to announce the employee of the month, but this one is extra special because I think I made every appointment I had this past year, and it wouldn't have been possible without the work of Teresa Devecky. She is an amazing person as far as keeping everyone's, my calendar straight, working with Jim and Ray, taking care of the proclamations that I read each meeting. It is Teresa that does the research and, uh, helps me deliver that message. And so, for all her work, and also for all the work she does in helping up, set up special meetings we have, food and everything, she is our employee for the month of January. And some special anniversaries. 35th anniversary for Margaret Harlan of the Madison Public Library. She celebrated 35 years on January 9th. And 30th anniversary also of the library of Diane Frida. So, pass it, her congratulations. That's a true dedication. That will be on the 31st. And, before I head down, I would like a motion for the Resolution R 26, 2013, Resolution of the Borough of Madison Confirming Membership of Colin Dunn in the Madison Hose Company Number One.
I'd say move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? I will just say, it's great to have another generation of Duns volunteering in Madison. Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walklewitz?
Yes.
And Colin, and if you can come forward with your family? All right, left hand of the Bible, raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Colin J. Dunn,
I, Colin J. Dunn,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully,
faithfully
impartially,
impartially
and justly perform all the duties
justly perform all the duties
of volunteer firefighter Hose Company Number One
of Hose Company Number One
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
I further solemnly swear
I further solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear truth faith and allegiance
and that I will bear truth faith and, uh,
allegiance
allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established in the United States
the governments established in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
on the authority of the people
on the authority of the people
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations and welcome aboard. And those that were here on New Year's Day, we recognize many volunteers that were stepping down off of boards and a couple who could not make it. I believe Andrea Warees gives me the audience? Nope, she, I guess she still couldn't make it. But, uh, she provided leadership for the Recreation Field Hockey Program, and thus also served on the Recreation Committee, and has stepped down from the, her leading role in field hockey, and has now also stepped down to Recreation Committee. But, five years, actually six years, starting 2007. How about Daniel Seidel? Okay, I'm 0 for 2, but, uh, Daniel Seidel for, um, six years inclusive of 2007, 2012 to the Parks Advisory Committee. They will receive these in the mail in appropriately packaged, uh, method? How about friend, do I have some Friends of the Madison Shad Tree in the audience? There we go, Judy's right there. Jean? Come on up. Come on up.
Is it my turn first?
Yes.
Friends of Madison Shad Trees is proud to present to the Borough specifically for use in replacing street trees lost during the storm, a check from our accumulated nonprofit fundraising to $10,000.
Yep. Yes. Thank you so much for your work for making this possible, and thank you for everyone in Madison that supported this clause, as we have a beautiful town with our trees, and as I've been saying, there will be a little reminder come spring when the leaves come out, and the views we are so used to will, will not be the same from what was lost during Sandy. So this is a good start to getting us back on track. Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing results ourselves. When these are, are, are learned and raised.
And stay up here, I have a proclamation to, to read. You can endorse that, right in the bank. Proclamation to the Friends of the Madison Shad Tree. Whereas the Friends of the Madison Shad Trees Incorporated was created in 1989, it's a nonprofit organization whose mission is to plant trees on public property, educate the community about the urban forest, and support Shad Tree Management Board. And whereas the Friends of the Madison Shad Trees supplement the Borough's Shad Tree Management Board with the help of donations from residents and businesses, proceeds from fundraising and grant awards. And whereas the Friends of Madison Shad Trees has created and continues to maintain pocket parks, landscape gardens on public property throughout Madison. And whereas the members of the Madison Shad Trees have volunteered countless hours landscaping many community projects, and have absorbed the expense of the planning, design, purchasing, installation, project management, and administration of these projects. And whereas the Friends of the Madison Shad Trees is committed to maintaining the beautiful trees that line the streets of Madison, and to that purpose has made a generous donation to the Shad Tree Management Board in the amount of $10,000 to be used to replace trees that the Borough of Madison lost due to Superstorm Sandy. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby thank the Madison, the Friends of the Madison Shad Trees, Inc. for their community support, and urge our residents and citizens to join with me in expressing appreciation for their efforts. Thank you so much. One more quick presentation before I get back to my seat. We have a great leadership team in, here in Madison, and it's great when the state recognizes the team we have. So here, to present to Jim Burnett, Assistant Administrator of Madison Borough, outstanding service to local government from the New Jersey Municipal Management Association, 2012. Jim, congratulations. And if I could just, um, let's see, understanding the council, if we can just jumpstart on one agenda item, because Matt needs to get out of here, and then we'll get to our reports from committees. Um, agenda item number one, or actually, um, agenda item number three, council orientation. This is just a, a very quick overview for, uh, people in the audience and also those watching at home. Our council members volunteer endless hours. The State League of Municipalities, uh, runs a course, and our council members attend that, and it's just a little helpful to have a local reminder, and one of the reasons we're doing it here is not only for the council members, but so our residents, our department heads can understand what their roles are and how this crew out here works so hard to support Madison. So, Matt?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I've left for you at your tables a memorandum, just giving you a brief overview of what I'm going to discuss. Uh, in New Jersey, there are various forms of government that governing bodies can elect. The Borough of Madison operates under a form of government known as the Borough Form of Government. It's a unique, uh, form of government. And it's really composed of two entities. You have the mayor, who is, serves a four-year term, and, uh, he presides over council meetings, can vote in the event of a tie, uh, can, uh, veto an ordinance, uh, he makes appointments with advice and consent of council. And then the other body is the council. And the council is really a legislative body. It's composed of the six members of council, each who serve for, uh, two, council people serve for three-year terms, there's three, uh, sets of two. And the council is delineated, um, by state statute. And really what it says, state statute, is you're a legislative body. You're very similar to Congress. You pass the, the budget, you adopt ordinances. Um, as I said earlier, in a lot of ways, you're kind of like the king and queen of, of Spain. You're Isabel and Ferdinand. And you, uh, get the map, you buy the ship, and then you give the reins over to your Borough Administrator, and your Assistant Borough Administrator, and your department heads, and say, get us, that's where we want to go, get us there. Um, what's very important is that the Borough Council, uh, form of government, you have ordinances. And the ordinances delineate specifically what your duties are as council people, and what the duties of mayor is in terms of running the governing body. Uh, you're a legislative, and although you guys are appointed as, um, uh, chairpersons to various committees, that's really more of a function as, as a legislative function, because you're supposed to come back and report, uh, your assignment. So, for example, if you're the chairperson for health, your job is to really interact with the Borough Administrator, the Assistant Borough Administrator, and the head of health. And then you come back as a liaison to report to the full governing body. And what happens here is, is where the power lies with the council. It takes four, four council people to create a quorum under the Open Public Meeting Act, and once you have a quorum, you can take votes, et cetera. So that's really the, the role of the council. Um, the one other thing that you've done in your Borough Code, which is very important, is that the Borough Code has established the, uh, office of the administrator and assistant administrator. And really, the administrator and the assistant administrator, they run the day-to-day operations of the department. Very similar to how a chief of police runs the day-to-day operations of the police department. The Borough Administrator and the Assistant Borough Administrator run the day-to-day operations of the governance of the Borough. They deal with the department heads, they deal with personnel issues, they deal with disciplinary items, they deal, they are your, uh, CEO of the corporation, that run the corporation. You're the board of directors. Um, now, the liaison system, and what's important about it is, is that a lot of people think that if you're the liaison, you run that department. We had a situation, uh, several years ago in another government, where a liaison thought that they ran that department. They don't. You serve, you are there as the spokesperson for the whole governing body when you're dealing with that department head. And so your jo- role is, is to interact and then report back to the governing body, get the direction from the governing body, if there's an ordinance, if there's a budgetary issue, and then you report back down to the department head. The department head works with you and the Borough Administrator to get that done. The other very important thing that I want to touch upon is, um, you have a number of collective bargaining agreements in the Borough of Madison. And so if there are issues in terms of grievances, you have a Personnel Procedures and Handbook that deals with employee issues, the best thing to do is allow the process, whether it's to go through the Collective Bargaining Agreement or the Personnel Procedures and Handbook, to resolve employee problems, and to let Jim Burnett and Ray Cody resolve those issues for you. You really want to try to, uh, allow them to be a buffer for you when dealing with the employees. The last thing that I want to touch upon, which is very, very important, is, um, you have to deal with the Open Public Meeting Act. The Open Public Meeting Act, and also the Open Public Record Act. The Open Public Meeting Act is whenever you have a meeting of more than four, where you have a quorum, where action could be taken, it has to be duly advertised in the paper at least 48 hours in advance. There has to be transparency in government, and the, the public has a right to participate and watch. So it's very important that, for example, I warn people with emails. If more than four people in the governing body get together and start emailing one another, well, you have a quorum, you haven't advertised for it, and that could constitute a meeting. So it's very, very important that when you're doing emails, and you're using your official email, rosenet.org, you email, uh, you know, Jim Burnett or Ray Cody individually, you do not email collectively or globally, because that could constitute a meeting. And the other thing that I, I like to just touch on, is when you're dealing with the Open Public Meeting Act, when you go in the executive session, as you know, there's limited circumstances when you can go in the executive sessions to have discussions. The real, the, the big ones are litigation, personnel, contract negotiations. When I say contract negotiations, it's not just labor agreements, it could be that you guys want to acquire a piece of property, and you're discussing the price of, you know, what should we offer? Uh, things that, if you revealed it publicly, could compromise the governing body's negotiations position. Those are the reasons you can go into, into closed session. Other than that, everything should be done here in public, such, the reason I'm giving this, this talk out here is that this is something that, you know, the whole world should know, the Borough Form of Government and how it operates. The last thing that's very important that I just want to touch upon is the Open Public Records Act. The Open Public Records Act is a law that again, allows transparency in government, and it says that basically any document is a document of the public. There are certain exceptions, if it deals with personnel, litigation, um, deliberative process, that you can exclude. But basically what ends up happening is if somebody wants to get a, a budget document, somebody wants to get the Borough Administrator's contract, somebody wants to look at my legal bills. Those are public records, the people have a right under the Open Public Record Act. So what I caution everybody, Borough, uh, governing body members, department heads, et cetera, use your efficient email accounts for emails, uh, make sure that whatever you write, people are going to be able to look at it and, and do an email request for that. And whatever you do, do not use your own private email accounts. Don't use Yahoos or Gmails, et cetera. Why? Because a lot of people think mistakenly that if you're using a private email account, like Matt Yacoby at Gmail, it's, uh, immune from the Open Public Record Act, and the case, that's not the case. There was a case that came out of Fair Lawn, where a former mayor's email, private email accounts were accessed by the Government Records Council. So, this is an overview memo that you guys can review, I'll be glad to go over any questions that you might have, uh, your next meeting. Um, and if, again, if there's any questions that you have during the course of governing, if you have an ethics issue or anything like that, please pick up the phone so I can give you guys guidance on, and, and, you know, it's easier to avoid a problem than to have to undo a problem. Thank you very much.
And we can, uh, thank you very much, Matt, for that. And, uh, before I let you go, we'll, one, I think it'd be great if we can post this on the council webpage, so the public can see it. Um, and again, a reminder, this is just part of the, the training the council gets, they also go through statewide training. Any questions or discussion, questions for Matt or discussion? Great, well, thank you very much, and Matt, I'll let you run off and...
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, Jean, my colleague, Jean, I was gonna...
Jean. Welcome to the seat. Just one other thing I forgot to announce, one, Ben, when you, you can announce the budget hearing dates, and, but, uh, on February 2nd, Saturday, 9:00 AM, we're having our first annual Borough Leadership Meeting, and this is for the chairs of all our committees, also vice chairs, and any other members that are interested in, uh, learning about leadership, and, uh, the do's and don'ts about being a chair, and also, um, how to run effective meetings, and we'll be talking about annual plans and their role in the strategic plan. So, that is February 2nd, it will be an advertised meeting, so even if you just want to come to observe, please do so. But if you come to observe, we might, you might find yourself on a future committee, because we assume you're very interested. And with that, let's go to our reports from committees. Health, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you probably know from all the huge media coverage, the state of New Jersey is currently in the grip of one of its worst flu seasons in recent, uh, memory. Uh, so with this in mind, the Madison Health Department urges, um, all the residents to be aware and take the precautionary and preventative measures. We are still giving flu shots, okay? So you could call the Madison Health Department, we have flu vaccine, and we're giving them at the Civic Center. Uh, you have to make an appointment, and it, this is for any age group at all. Um, and it's, uh, the telephone number there is 973-593-3079. So please take advantage of that. There's, um, I was in Stop &amp; Shop the other day, and they have run out of the flu vaccine. So, um, that, this is a great place to, um, to get it. And, um, just as a little matter, uh, the Board of Health gave 80 flu shots just today. So people are listening, and, um, they're, they're concerned about this. You should be taking some precautions. Uh, I know that Lisa Gula, who is our, um, Health Officer, will be putting this on rosenet, but, um, one of the, the best things after you get your, your flu shot is just to take care of yourself, um, with the usuals, washing the hands, covering your mouth with a cough, and staying home when you're sick. Um, so there's good recommendations, and, um, you know, hopefully, all the employees will, employers will understand that, uh, we should really be staying home and not infecting people. Um, so we're busy at the Board of Health, so the 2013 licenses and applications are all, um, all the renewals are all due by January 31st. So, it's cat and dog license application, as well as our retail food establishment licensing. Um, so you could get all of that paperwork now on the Health Department website if that pertains to you. There's a couple of things happening right now in the legislature that, um, are currently concurrent bills in, um, that are S 2430 and A 3690 that declares violence a public health crisis, recommends expansion of mental health program, recommends federal adoption of gun control measures, and we'll be talking a little bit about that later, and establishes Study Commission on Violence. So, um, if you get an opportunity to take a look at these bills and write to your, um, your Assembly and your Senators, it would be really good. The first in a quarterly series of employee wellness programs will be held at the end of January, and the topic will be cold flu, pertussis and new, and how to know the difference between them while protecting yourself from all of them. So, um, again, we're very busy. Please take advantage of all of the good services that we offer. And I, I also want to say, good luck to you, John. Yeah, that's, uh, that's really a great opportunity, so good luck to you. Thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And before we go to the next report, I just want to, again, thank the department heads who, who stayed here to listen to Matt Yacoby's presentation, and hopefully it was helpful, and you are free to stay, but you're also free to leave, and we won't pass judgment if you do so. So thank you for... So let's move on to utilities. Ms. Tsukamoto?
Yes, thank you. First, electric utility. Last week, JC PNL successfully made additional repairs to one of the feeder line. We ran on the other feeder line and did not experience any outage during the repair. In addition to all the regular electric services, maintaining street lights, and utility mark out requests, our electric crews continue to repair damages due to Sandy. We expect to spend many more months to repair the extensive damages. I also have exciting news about the Housing Authority and Morris Habitat's Strickland Project. Some of you might read this, might have read the Star Ledger article about Madison, it's getting a late Christmas gift from the Tishman's Spire, the co-owners and managers of Rockefeller Center. I visited the Rockefeller Center Christmas tree with Morris Habitat last week, right before the tree was taken down and made into construction lumber. The 80-foot, 10-ton Norway spruce will be made into 6 to 900 2x4s. All of these will be donated to Morris Habitat, and a good portion of it will be used for building the three single-family affordable homes on Strickland Place. We will invite the mayor and council to come celebrate the delivery of this gift in
stayed here to listen to Matt Yacobi's presentation, and hopefully it was helpful, and you are free to stay, but you're also free to leave, and we won't pass judgment if you do so. So thank you for, so let's move on to utilities. Ms. Tsukamoto.
Yes, thank you. First, electric utility. Last week, JCPN successfully made additional repairs to one of the feeder line. We ran on the other feeder line and did not experience any outage during the repair. In addition to all the regular electric services, maintaining streetlights, and utility mark out requests, our electric crews continue to repair damages due to Sandy. We expect to spend many more months to repair the extensive damages. I also have exciting news about the Housing Authority and Morris Habitat's Strickland Project. Some of you might read this, might have read the Star Ledger article about Madison. It's getting a late Christmas gift from the Tishman Spire, the co-owners and managers of Rockefeller Center. I visited the Rockefeller Center Christmas tree with Morris Habitat last week, right before the tree was taken down and made into construction lumber. The eighty-foot, ten-ton Norway spruce will be made into six to nine hundred two-by-fours. All of these will be donated to Morris Habitat, and a good portion of it will be used for building the three single-family affordable homes on Strickland Place. We will invite the mayor and council to come celebrate the delivery of this gift in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Great story. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you, Mayor. DPW had a yard waste collection last Saturday, and over four hundred old Christmas trees were delivered to the DPW for recycling. They will continue to pick up trees of the curb until they're all gone. We'll be hearing a little bit later about the green fair that's coming up, so I won't spend much time on it. And in the next meeting, also hopefully we'll have some good news about some repairs to the Luke Miller Forge that I will, that I will be introducing an agenda rec for. We've, volunteers have been able to do some private fundraising. I've raised adequate funds to do repairs, and we'll be seeking permission to do so. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, in community affairs, I represent a lot of different organizations, including the Senior Advisory, the Recreation Advisory, MACA, DDC, Chamber of Com, some true liaison. A number of these groups haven't met yet, so I don't have individual reports. However, one has been busy at work, and that's the Senior Advisory Committee. As you know, the mayor, Carmella, and I have made several trips down to Union Beach, and they've actively been knitting clothing for the people that are still out of their homes down there. And as of February 7th, they, well, they'll have over three hundred items, so congratulations to them. They've not stopped. They're working very hard at it. Also, they're putting the finishing touches on next April's event called Editing Your Life: Adopt, Declutter, and Downsized, which will feature local nonprofits who help with age-related change, house choices, and cleaning out a home. Lord knows, I need it. And finally, I just want to expand on something Carmella said. I was up at the hospital the other day. Take this flu shot and take care of yourself very seriously. Their emergency room is overwhelmed right now. A lot of people are very sick, so I'll come out, thank you for bringing that out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. I have met with Acting Chief Darren Dashison of the Police Department and Chief Lou De Rosa of the Fire Department. We reviewed their budgets, their ideas for shared services and ways to cut costs, so that's good. And also from the Fire Department, firefighters Jim Finelli, Bruce Goodwin, Matt Keane, and Kyle Wickman completed a sixty-hour fire officer certification class in December at the Morris County Fire Academy. All four successfully passed their state fire officer exam, so congratulations to them. At the January meeting of the Volunteer Division of the Madison Fire Department, the following members were elected. Jim Finelli, captain, Tom Boland, lieutenant, Scott Doughton, president, Anthony Russo, vice president, Matt Keane, treasurer, and Troy Pahowick, secretary. And we also want to, again, congratulate Colin Dunn for being our newest volunteer fire officer. And the last thing for the Fire Department, the house located at 85 Park Avenue that was severely damaged by fire on November 17th was taken down today. And I am also liaison to Project Community Pride. And maybe, many of you may not be familiar with Project Community Pride. It is a service organization. It began over thirty years ago as a community-wide effort to address the behavioral and emotional needs of youth who became involved with the law. Today, this service organization is much more than that. It serves the youth and families of Florham Park, Madison, and Chatham. We have three licensed clinical social workers. They are available to provide divorce support, counseling on issues including anger, anxiety, depression, suicide. Madison residents are extremely fortunate to have access to these mental health services for their children. And coincidentally, in the Daily Record today, front page, a need for help, aid for mentally ill, inadequate in state and country. So here we have this great service for our children. Support for the Project Community Pride comes from each town, their school boards, and private donations. In order to continue their services, Project Community Pride depends on donations from our residents. It is a 501(c)(3), contributed, contributions are tax deductible, checks can be made out to Project Community Pride and sent to Borough Hall. Project Community Pride, Pride deserves our support. It is a big help to our children and will hopefully prevent tragedies that we've seen in this country this past year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to tell you all that the financial markets agree with us that Madison's a very special place. It was last Thursday, January 10th, that Madison Borough received six bids after its solicited bids in the marketplace on an issue of $7,743,000 in seven-month bond anticipation notes. You may recall we've been using these as a financing vehicle both for the forty-nine acres and the turf fields. The low and winning bid resulted in net interest cost of .1887%. To put that in tangible terms that we all appreciate, for seven months' worth of $7.743 million, we will pay approximately $8,400. So if you thought your mortgage was low, this is pretty terrific. Of this total, as I mentioned, 4.48 pays for the land acquisition of the forty-nine acres and 3.26 are for the fields. We anticipate both those amounts declining, in the case of the forty-nine acres because of the receipt of open space funds from the state, and in the case of the fields because of user fees and funds raised by the Madison Athletic Foundation. In, in this unusually low rate environment, historically unusually low, we will be examining alternative ways of going forward with funding in the future. As the mayor indicated, I have a couple of budget meetings, budget hearings to announce. They will be coming up very soon. Process begins on Wednesday, January 30th. We will meet at 7:00 PM. On Thursday, February 21st, again, we'll meet at 7:00 PM. And on Saturday, March 2nd, we'll be meeting at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Council has received four items since our last meeting. An email received December the 20th from Kenneth Sullivan of Park Avenue regarding storm debris removal. Another email received December 24th from Elizabeth Rosica of Hillside Avenue regarding the mayor's against illegal guns campaign. An email received January 5th from Bill McSheen of Albright Circle regarding a property at 29 Sampson Avenue. And a letter received January 11th from Lois Unono of Pine Tree Terrace regarding paving on Derwood Fletcher Pine Tree Terrace.
Thank you. All right, this is the first of two invitations for discussion. This one has got the limitations on it. You may comment on things on our discussion agenda or resolutions that are listed. And the other comments must be held off until our second round, a little bit later in the meeting. And the same rules apply for both rounds, and that is, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And when you come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and then I'll start your clock. Items on discussion for today are assault weapons legislation and equipment demonstration, the Green Forum, and we already did the number three, which is a council orientation, but you still can comment on that. So I know some people may have come here to comment on the assault weapon legislation, so this would be the time for the public to comment on that because once we move forward, it will just be a council discussion. So with those rules, is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard? Dr. Finley, come on up.
Is this one, that assault weapon?
As long, as long as it's one of those three categories. If it's something else, you'll have to wait for the next round.
I'm Dr. Joseph, Dr., good, good evening. I'm Dr. Joseph Finley, Level 1 Palmroy Road, Madison. Mr. Mayor, council members, town officials, the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I come before you as a physician and a citizen, and I suggest that the Borough Council initiate the formation of a grassroots movement that persists until America accomplishes effective gun safety. I am ashamed, frustrated, and also hopeful. I'm ashamed that we as a society have failed in the past to prevent the massacres, the individual murders, and the mayhem resulting from so many daily deaths and serious woundings. I am frustrated that we think there is little that one can do to fight the powerful NRA and those extremists who make sensible, reasonable gun control hard to discuss and achieve. I am frustrated that our elected officials, both state and federal, must surrender to the mistaken belief that the NRA and the gun industry control outcomes through financing elections. I am frustrated that we do not persist in educating and uncovering the cultural and mythic factors that so profoundly underscored the role of individual guns in our national mystique. I am frustrated by the fact that like the cigarette industry, the Gun Library can stifle research through the Center for Disease Control about the role of guns in deaths and profound disabilities. On the other hand, I am hopeful that driven by the unspeakable tragedies, we will focus on addressing this complex blend of Second Amendment rights, public safety, civil society, and mental health that must be addressed. Finally, I am hopeful that we can create a grassroots process built on respect for diverse opinions, productive dialogue, and this, that this movement will maintain due diligence until our country can finally reduce the number of unspeakable daily tragedies that so define our culture. In the event that this body will facilitate this, I am available to help in any way I can.
Thank you so much, Dr. Finley. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Let's move on to agenda discussion number one, which is the assault weapon legislation and equipment. Rob, this was your agenda recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a word, even though we've, we've labeled it assault weapon legislation, equipment, demonstration, what we're, what we're discussing is not limited to assault weapons. The state of New Jersey has some of the strictest, depending upon who you talk to, some people say it's the second most restrictive state in the nation if you want to purchase a firearm. In order to buy a, to buy any weapon, you need to, to get a firearm purchaser ID card. That's a lengthy process that includes background checks, fingerprinting, interviews, or, not only interviews, but they'll call neighbors, they'll ask for personal references and everything like that. And once you get that card, you're, that entitles you to buy shotguns or rifles. Every time you want to buy a handgun, you need to actually get another permit, so you have to go to the police department, fill out forms, wait for a permit to be issued, and then that permit is only good for a set amount of time when you want to go and buy a handgun. The state of New Jersey also restricts the use of, or the sale or possession of fully automatic weapons, either rifles or machine pistols, without a permit, and restricts the size magazine that you're allowed to buy or possess in the state. And what, the idea is, is that we will ask our federal representatives to propose making New Jersey gun laws federal. The mayor and I have talked about this at length. We're coming at it from different angles. I am a member of the NRA. I was appalled not only by the, by the murders in, in Connecticut late last year, but also what happened in Colorado, but I was also appalled that, especially in this last case in Connecticut, weapons were not being stored properly in the home. They were not locked. They did not have trigger locks. They were not locked in a safe. And the ability to get these large-capacity magazines boggles the mind. So what we are, what we are asking the governing body to opine on and recommend is that we pass a resolution that will officially go to our Congressman and two senators, our state senator and governor, and our, our, our local state representatives as well to move ahead and propose that New Jersey gun laws become federal. I'd also like everyone, just so you have an idea of what we're talking about, we're talking about large-capacity magazines, fully automatic rifles, and even we have a, an example of, of one of the weapons that was used in Connecticut. I've asked Officer Kevin Boone and Acting Police Chief Darren Dashison to give us a short demonstration on what is exactly, you can't buy here, but that you can buy elsewhere. Because remember, a lot of, a lot of the crime that happens in, in New York and New Jersey with guns comes from guns that are sold out of state and then transported here. So even though we have very restrictive laws, states that don't have it, there's really no way to control someone just buying guns there and bringing them up here and selling them on, on the street. So if you wouldn't mind?
Okay, good evening. My name is, uh, Mr. Kevin Boone, married twenty-nine years. What, you're significant, and I'll remind you one thing, this is clear, it's been cleared in the zip lock so that you can not open the breech here. This is a AR-15, Bushmaster AR-15, M-16, AR version, excuse me, M4 version, it's got a collapsible stock on it. This is the same weapon that was used in Sandy Hook. This is the weapon, it's a Bushmaster. It has a thirty-round, the magazine capacity is thirty-round. The weapon he used, the ammo he used, excuse me, was a 5.56. When you have M16s like this, you can have a 2.23, which means nothing to you unless you're a gun enthusiast, or a 5.56. 5.56 is a military weapon, military round they use. It's a little bit more powerful than a 2.23. The definition of automatic, some people say automatic, this is not a fully automatic weapon. It's a semi-automatic weapon. When you pull the trigger, you get one round, one bullet goes off at a time, but very rapidly it will discharge thirty rounds very quickly. You have two selectors, a selector switch on here that fire, not fire, magazine release, drop the magazine, you had a couple magazines, and that's how he was able to accomplish what he did in such a short amount of time. This, however, is a fully automatic machine gun. That's universal machine pistol. That takes a forty-caliber round. There's two, three selector switches on that, with single, triple, and fully automatic. You take that weapon, pull the trigger, it gets rid of all thirty rounds. Thirty-round magazine. This is the same weapon, it's the same magazine, or the same bullet that we use in our hand, it's a forty-caliber. But they call a machine pistol because it doesn't take a rifle round. The movie theater, same weapon. If you remember a couple of years ago, I don't know if you can see what I have. A couple of years ago back down in Washington when nobody wanted to get gas, the guy that was hiding in the back of the truck, same weapon, Bushmaster. This is a Vietnam-era, that's a Vietnam-era M-16, the A1 version. That's fully automatic. The same, same as this, this is more of an entry tool because you go to a doorway, you know, you're stuck, you drop, you drop the stock on it. Same, the same magazine it takes, and it takes a, it's an older version of a magazine, it's like a metal magazine. These magazines prior to Sandy Hook, fifteen dollars on the internet. They went up to thirty lately. You can get any of this on the internet, not, well, not these, but you can get any of this on the internet. You buy this, you have to go to a broker, a gun dealer, buy the low receiver and all the upper receivers and the, the dress-outs we call them, you can get it on the internet.
How much you pay to buy it, it's thirty rounds, you have to pull the trigger each time?
Long-term utility, very quick.
That's what I mean.
Very low.
Seconds.
Seconds. Fifteen seconds.
Almost make the share of get up from lunch and money every couple of days.
That's, that's a problem. That's a problem.
Does anyone have any questions? Mayor?
How often, well, you probably don't have the numbers, but I'm assuming...
I'll often, well, you probably don't have the numbers, but I'm assuming it's, that it's not uncommon for those weapons to be transported by car from another state right into New Jersey.
You go to Pennsylvania, you go to Pennsylvania, you buy them, like, we've got a drug line, drug market.
Sort of Rob's point, unless this becomes national, New Jersey could have the strictest gun laws in the nation, but people would just bring them right in here.
You said you could go to Pennsylvania with, just with a driver's license or Bible, but isn't the, if you have an purity driver's license, and if you're required to have a curving appearance, would Pennsylvania still sell you a gun with an purity license, or you have to have a Pennsylvania license in order to buy the gun without a curving?
They sell you a weapon. It may be a weight pair, but they sell you a weapon. Make you shift it.
I don't want, I don't want any shift. I just wondered, because I know Pennsylvania, you have to have, or I do, you had to have a Pennsylvania driver's license in order to buy a gun in Pennsylvania. I didn't know purity license, you could still buy a gun in Pennsylvania.
Florida, Ohio.
Virginia.
This is something that you've mentioned. I was just wondering, I didn't know, I didn't know the exact.
Guys, I love you. I think I do a lot for the Madison Police Department, but that information is incorrect.
What is it?
I cannot buy a 30-round magazine on the internet because it specifically says 30 rounds or certain magazines will not ship to New Jersey. I cannot go to the Bell's in Long Island, Pennsylvania without my firearm ID card. I can purchase a gun, they won't give it to me, they won't ship it to my house, they will ship it to an FFL of my choice.
To a firearms license dealer.
To a firearms license dealer. Then I go to the dealer, and I present my card, I pay the transfer fees, they call up for the background check, and see if I'm clean on the background check, and only then will they give me that rifle, or I'll take possession of that rifle or that handgun. So for the people here who think that I can just go on the internet.
Legally, if you want to do it legally, you do that.
Well, that's how I do it.
Okay, what you're saying, you're talking about somebody who's buying weapons across lines, for Jersey, you can't do that. If you go to Pennsylvania, you can get yourself a weapon. If you go to Ohio, you can get yourself a weapon and bring it back.
You're talking about, you're talking about illegally.
We're talking about, you've got to find the guys with the guns. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, I'm sure.
Okay, we're trying to provide informational, we don't want to get in debate at this point, but I think the, and if there's any other questions, it'll take them a second, but as I'm sitting here and I see two officers who I know very well, in uniform, and I get this sinking feeling in my stomach as I see these weapons in front of me, and I can imagine the feeling as you, in a school, in a theater, and all of a sudden you see this. I think that's the point we're trying to make here. This is a serious problem, and as Rob Pannanell and I, as Rob said today, and I said on New Year's Day, enough is enough, and that's why we're bringing this forward, and we want to put forth a resolution asking the federal government to adopt New Jersey level, and so it's not, as Rob pointed out, not just the assault weapons, but just common sense things. We're not trying to outlaw weapons, we're just trying to bring common sense. One question which the people watching this on TV eventually may have, and people in the audience is, what is the Madison Police doing with these weapons?
We use it for emergency services.
We have a question, sir.
Okay, see, yep. Gene, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, there you go.
We actually have these to come back, we use it for entries. Should you have an active shooter, we have an active shooter program.
So you have a training on it?
Training on it.
Yep.
They're in cars.
You've been 29 years of wonderful service. Have you ever fired a weapon?
Doctor 1998 on Keats Street. Hang on, wasn't a, wasn't a, wasn't a rifle, sorry.
How many, I mean, in the last 10 years, how many police departments, well, there's 25 years, have provided that any?
None. Not here.
I just want to make the point that the idea that people get in the middle of that kind of cloud, that fog of, of, that doesn't work, because we know that police work, all the right, it shows that people and those practices are so in that, just take the shootings in New York where 300, 300 bullets make those pan even multi.
Okay, any other questions for the audience? Ask Tim.
You can also get armor piercings rounds for those weapons?
I'm not sure. Legally?
Illegally?
Illegally? You can use any one.
And how can they have those, well, in terms of penetration, you know, with hot lights?
Well, this right here, this 5.56 will penetrate. You don't need to get armor piercings, this will penetrate.
It's a shape charge.
Right through the car, right through your vest.
Right through your vest.
Right through the vest.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, we don't have a resolution listed for today. We do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do.
I apologize.
It's, uh...
At the end, I apologize, I lost track, yeah, thank you very much.
R-39, 2013.
Thank you, so R-30, I lost my, track of my notes here, and it is posted, so we will approve this under the Consent Agenda, and Rob also suggested, which is a great idea, we will send this out to all the municipalities in New Jersey with a letter, encourage them to jump on board with this and share with the League of Municipalities.
And just, you know, we're not talking about confiscating weapons, we're not talking about making, changing laws whatsoever for residents in the state of New Jersey, it's just, you know, I think it's, you know, I think it's a pain to buy a gun here, you know, I lived in Texas. When I moved to Texas, at the time, a 16-year-old could walk into a gun store, 16-years-old, buy a handgun, load it, put it on his holster, walk outside and plain view it, that was totally legal. I remember the first time I went to the Bell Star Bar in Dallas, Texas, there was a sign that said, "Check your guns." We're like, oh, the punks from Northeast, like, ha, 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 and you see cowboys walk in and checking their guns, guys that get shot all the time, and it's just, you know, just want to try to protect New Jersey residents and residents of, you know, our town from illegal guns coming up. So the best way to do it is to get one uniform instead of legislation, I think.
Thank you, Rob. Jeanie?
Yeah, I want to follow up on something that Ms. Bailey said a little bit earlier about Project Community Pride. It's kind of related, it's all about prevention of violence. While the issue of gun laws really need to be addressed at the federal level, I would like to encourage us to work with the Board of Education on enhancing our mental health program. As you know, that the Project Community Pride program, it's a, it's a mental health program that we work with the Board of Education on. I know that Acting Chief Datchison was working with Board of Education on reviewing and improving security in our schools late December. I would ask that we also invest on enhancing our existing mental health program. Ms. Bailey mentioned earlier that the Project Community Pride program has successfully helped address issues such as bullying, suicide, self-mutilation, drugs, anger, anxiety, depression, divorce, and many other behavioral and emotional issues for our students and their families. And I would encourage that we find ways to expand this critical service. I will certainly, since I'm no longer the liaison, but I certainly would be interested in working with our liaison for Board of Education and Project Community Pride to see, since this is budget season, to see if we can find creative ways, along with Board of Education, to expand this very successful existing program. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanie. Any other comments? Thank you very much, and Rob, pass thanks to Acting Chief and Patrolman Boone for taking the time to be here.
So I'm Betsy Almond, and this is Mike Copas, and we represent some of the sponsoring organizations for the upcoming Green Forum, Sustainable Madison, Shade Tree Management Board, Environmental Commission, Open Space Recreation, and Historical Preservation, and Parks Advisory Committee. So as many Green Committees as you know of are coming together, and we're hoping to have a very safe evening, and it will be the greatest, the largest brainstorming session on Green issues that Madison has ever had. It will be held 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. on January 24th, Thursday night. Thursday night, and it will be held at Drew, thanks to Mike Copas's intervention, at the Anger Center, which is LEED certified, a very green building, or on its way to being certified. We'll have roundtable discussions of three important areas, the greening of homes and businesses, green spaces, and getting around Madison, and we have selected these based on a survey that we conducted, our groups at Bottle Hill Day. So this is an opportunity to be heard by the Green Committees, by the mayor and council, by borough administration, and we're really inviting residents and students to be part of a conversation, and we think this is the first time it's ever happened, and we look forward to having you join us. And look for these around town.
24th at 7:00 p.m. Any questions for Jeanie?
Betsy, did you mention, you read off a list of committees, did you include a complete streets committee?
We have not been...
Please do.
Okay, great. We'd love to have a complete streets sponsorship. Perfect.
Thank you.
Where will it be at, Drew? In the Anger Center, which is the new name for the old University Center. It's on the east side of campus. You come in the church gate entrance, right up the road on the right inside.
Hey, thank you very much, and thank you for all the work on this, this will be a great event. Okay, that is it for Agenda Discussions, and we have no, since this is the first regular meeting of the year, we have no ordinances for hearing. So now we are for Round Two, Invitation for Discussion, and this is when you can speak on any topic, not limited to things on the agenda, but the same rules apply. State your name, your address, and keep your minutes to, keep your comments to three minutes or less, or keep your minutes to three comments or less, one or the other. Under those rules, is there anyone else, anyone wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Sosil, Wood 28 Park Avenue, Madison. You started off good, Bob, a couple minutes late, but that was good, and plus, everything looks good so far, so you're doing a good start. He's all doing a good job. Anyway, there, by the way, I've been watching that Elm Street job and that, they're doing a tremendous job, those guys, I mean, they're first-class outfits, so it's going to be nice. Also, I stopped at the high school, and they did tell me that they're squaring that away, so I got some good news from you guys, and they said they're going to put us back on television, so that's good, too. So you're doing a good job. Anyway, at the last meeting, Bob, with the reorganization, there was a bunch of committees, is there anything about the construction committee? Do we still have a construction committee?
It's kind of an ad hoc committee, we haven't formalized it for this year, but we will do so, that'll be under Rob's leadership as liaison to engineering and DPW, so we'll...
Well, again, like I said, I like to get on that because that's my expertise. Now, if I may, Mayor, not only in construction all my life, I'm trying to start a new career part-time, I'm doing stand-up comic. And me and the wife go to the, I mean, you've got to laugh once in a while, because what's going on in this, this country is going crazy, so we've got to take a break and laugh a little bit. I like telling jokes. So what I did is I put together a little thing, a week from Saturday, 26th of January, at the North Stars, I'm having a little fundraiser, it's called Comic Night, I hired two professional comics, excellent, they played at Romanelli's, and it's a good, it's a good night. So, and all the money that's realized is going to go to Union Beach, give a check to you, hope it's a few dollars.
I was hoping there was a lead back to a benefit, so now you're okay.
Yeah, and again, Saturday, January 26th at 7:30, it's at the North Stars Club, and I hope you guys, it's going to be a fun night. Matter of fact, hopefully, while there's posters all around, it explains everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. There are no ordinances for introduction. Consent Agenda Resolutions.
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda Resolutions are 27-2, 2013, to R-39, 2013. Second?
Discussion, or any that need to be pulled out?
I just wanted to make sure 27 was corrected, Liz? Yes, okay, great. It's your turn.
Anything else? Okay, roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
All right, any, there is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $68,519.2. Health and public assistance, $24,209.67. Public works and engineering, $274,416.87. Community affairs, $22,852.34. Finance and borough clerk, $3,575,881.76. Utilities, $1,527,643.36. Total is $5,493,523.2.
Motion?
I move approval of the vouchers. Second?
Discussion. Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
All right, under new business, I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation, this is for the Borough Board of Education Shared Services Committee, somewhat an ad hoc committee, we reappoint every year. As liaison to the Board of Education, Ben Walkowitz, as a backup to liaison, Bob Landrigan, I will be the third member as mayor, and backup alternate member will be Ostry Bailey. I have a motion to approve that Shared Services Committee.
I'll move that. Second?
Discussion. Okay, roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
And now it's your big moment.
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for your, you know...
Thank you.
We will tell Matt that there were some very hot topics, and she handled it perfectly.
That's wonderful, we can make stuff like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. We'll try, we'll try. Do you know what? Thank you, ma'am. Did you see that first?